For years, you know, they'll, they'll say, hey, there's a water leak. Or whatever, they'll use it for non-emergencies as well. But, so I contacted Code Red and, and talked to them about our need for mass notification for the county.
What was that?
Anyway. So, uh, they said that since Cisco and Eastland and Ranger are already on it, like we've, we've got a pretty good price break. And they're, they're, they said fifty one hundred dollars a year, and that's for the entire county. Um, and we would, he also said that since they're already on it, that all of their contacts that they've already been working on all these years would also suck into ours. Uh, since they're in the county and we would be, be able to accumulate all those contacts as well. Um, I really think that we need some kind of mass notification system for emergencies and, and even sometimes for non-emergencies. But, um, they're, they're also gonna help, uh, get, uh, me cert FEMA certified where if it's a real s- big, huge, super emergency, then you don't have to be signed up on Code Red. We can break over all the phones, um, and, and the cable and, and, and some other things. Now, there's some rules with that. It has to be a real deal emergency, but, uh, other than that, we'd be able to send out whatever we wanted on it. I really think that there's a, there's a need for that, and we saw that, uh, just recently. So, I would, uh, I, I should have the extra fifty one hundred in the budget out of mine, uh, this year. So I would like to, to go ahead and do this, um, and then build it into the budgets from now on afterwards.
Is it a one-year contract? Do we do it today? You sign up for another year?
Yeah, they're annual.
So it would have to be annualized somewhere around June of next year.
Right.
I tell you guys, it was, it was pretty spooky out there when that fire was, was lit on. I called Jade, who lives out there. I said, you start calling people that are around here.
That's what we were doing.
It took about an hour to get all that message out. It was.
We were going door to door, and while we were going door to door, we were saying, call anybody you know out here. You know, so there's a real need and, and I would like to get with some of the county, if, if y'all approve this. I'd like to get with some of the county offices that send out all these mass mailings all the time and maybe get them to put in a little deal on their mails to how the people to sign up, and we put it on the website and all that stuff too, to really start a campaign to get this, uh, everybody signed up.
As I recall from the city, I signed up in the city of Rain, uh, city of Eastland and city of Cisco. You've got to go to the website and go through a process to sign your cell number up to get those alerts. So would, would Code Red put something on our website, the county website?
Yes.
Just sign up here for Code, Code Red?
Yes, we can do that on our website. Um, I know at Eastland PD, I don't know if Cisco's doing it, but they can just call the, the secretary down there and she'll sign them up right then and there too. We try to make it as easy as possible for people to do. It's really easy to do.
I did it online.
Yeah, and you can sign up for multiple ones. I'm signed up for Cisco and Eastland. But, um, it's really helped over, it sends out automatic ones for, for, if you're under, uh, the storm watch or warning or tornado warning or whatever. It sends them out automat, you don't even have to touch it. But it's, it's really a good, good little system. There's several different systems out there, but, uh, I thought that going with that one, that everybody's already used to in the county, using that would be better.
Code Red too. I'm gonna see, I know Cisco asked to use the Code Red and I think the Rising Star does too. They have some way to do mass notification.
I do, I know they do, and I don't know what system it's under, uh, but if they're under Qu- Code Red, we should be able to suck those contacts up under us as well. So we'll have a good head start.
I kinda looked at this years ago, but the pricing was a whole lot more than fifty one hundred dollars a year. It was, it was cost-renewed for us to do.
For, for my understanding, since the other ones are already signed up, it's not that big a deal for them to, to do it.
This is great. I appreciate it because living out in Olden for thirty something years, we never had notifications unless your neighbors happen to be home and say, hey, got a fire in the backyard.
Happened over here at Lake Leon. We just start calling people. Okay, well, who lives here? Who lives here? Who lives here?
Because that train, once it starts, it's, that fire, it's, it's gone.
You know, we had the tornado a few years ago. I mean, there's, you know, even on non-emergency stuff, it's, it's helpful. You know, just, just letting the public know what's going on, what you're doing, you know, we got a water outage or electric outage or, or whatever, you know.
Who'd be the administrators besides you? I mean, you need to be the administrator.
I think that, I think that myself, the county judge, and, and probably Darla out of dispatch, uh, would be, you know, probably don't need to be sending stuff out every five seconds because people stop looking at it. But, uh, I think that un- and unless somebody else wants on it, I think that'd be the three.
I think that's perfect. And I, I would put on there, the county judge, the sheriff, the dispatch administrator.
Just so I know where it's coming from, yeah. Yeah, and it does. It, it, it says that when you send them out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, what do you think?
I'm good. I like, I get them already.
For the record, which line are you going to pay this out of? Because you have three budgets.
Hmm, sheriff's office.
I'll make a motion to allow him to sign whatever he needs to get it done, Judge.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to allow sheriff to sign a contract with Code Red to take care of that matter and get us signed up for it.
Awesome.
All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Unanimous. Assistant Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner.
Thank you.
It'll be a good thing.
Sheriff, thank for working on that. That's.
We'll get Julie to put it out too.
Julie, would you like to amen that or? Hey, we're counting on you to do that. Okay. We're gonna do Code Red. That's the good news. We're gonna have Code Red for the county.
And I'll send out a deal with the media and all that stuff too.
Okay, good deal.
Now I hear it.
If, uh, if we can get, like y'all sent out a zillion mails, just a little excerpt or some, something, maybe we can get together after a while or something.
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah.
All right, good deal. And we'll move on to item number four, discuss, consider moving a payroll budget from jail shift leader to jail temporary. Sheriff.
So, we've had a lot of, and I've, I've mentioned this before to y'all, we've had a big increase on, uh, in all the administrator stuff that we've got going on and all the mandate stuff we've got going on. And, um, April's been out, uh, a lot with her husband on the, uh, with some medical stuff. And so we've had, uh, Jessica Trammell, who is one of the part-time dispatchers, uh, she's been filling in over there. Um, and we've actually been using her quite a bit, um, to help stay caught up and, and, uh, just to help out. Um, Loretta said that I need to move money from the, and we have actually extra money in our, uh, because we went shorthanded, uh, two spots in the jail since November. We just got those filled a few weeks ago. Uh, we also had a couple of spots with the deputies. So we, we've got a little extra money in the payroll bill, and so we'd like to move some of that over to the temporary line item. And did you want to create a part-time line item or what did you want to do?
Not in this budget. We just need to move it to the existing one.
Anyway, so I'd like to move some of that payroll money, uh, that excess payroll money over to that line item so that we can, we don't go over in there and, and we can continue to try to utilize her a little bit more to stay.
About seven thousand.
That's what we want. That's what we need to move.
Cover the average and double what we spent already.
Okay, I'd like to move about seven thousand according to.
Okay, we want to move it from two. Give me that from and then to where.
From zero one zero five six one 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 eight, which is jail shift leader.
Okay.
To zero one zero five six one one zero seven, which is temporary.
Okay.
Why are we the?
Because that line has.
Oh, okay. So that's, that's where we're going to move the seven thousand. All right. Gentlemen, questions, comments? Do we have a motion to make that move from one one eight to one oh seven temporary?
I'm sure. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
Thank you.
So we're moving to seven thousand dollars from one one eight to one zero seven.
Appreciate that, guys. Thank you.
All right. And let's see. Item number five is discuss, consider and order adopting two thousand, excuse me, two zero seven K exemption for law enforcement. Ms. Keaton.
I thought I had an extra copy, so we don't have to share.
Um, years ago, before, I think anybody but Judge Field was on this court.
Oh, ma'am.
Um, I did not say that. Um, the sheriff, previous sheriff came to court and wanted the two oh seven K exemption for, um,
Jailers.
Jailers, which were being paid eighty regular hours. And at eighty-six hours, they would start getting time and a half. So they'd have to work eighty-six regular hours before they'd ever get time and a half. You want to take it from there?
Guys, they're the only ones that are called out in the whole personnel policy. I don't, everybody else is at eighty hours and they're at eighty-six. They work an eighty-hour schedule. I don't know, I don't know why he did that. I haven't talked to, to Bradford about that, about why that happened. But it, it causes a lot of, uh, confusion problems, causes problems with their office as well and payroll. It's completely different, adjusted differently and, and frankly, it's just not fair. You know, the, it just boils down to, I don't know why that, that happened. Just because the law.
Working eighty-four hour weeks, I think.
Yeah, if you do a full straight twelve hours, and they may have been doing that back then, but, but now we, we have short shifts, uh, for everybody, uh, that, that cuts that down to eighty so that we're not going over that eighty. Uh, so, um, there's been some, and I didn't even realize it, or we would have talked about this when we were redoing everything before. Uh, but I've had several jailers ask, you know, what, why are we singled out here? What's, what's the problem? And just be, yes, the federal law does say you can do that, doesn't mean we have to, you know. And I would appreciate it if we put them down to eighty, just like everybody else. That's all we're, that's all we're asking.
So you're just saying, take that, this man, this right here out, place him.
So I don't know if y'all got a copy of everything. Yeah, so it, it'd just be replacing, uh, inside three oh two, uh, under exceptions, number four, uh, it says jailers will receive overtime pay for any time worked over the regular eighty-six hour work period. And it would be changing it to eighty hours.
Makes sense.
I'm gonna make one for you too, so.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, questions, comments?
That's just comp time though, right? It just goes over comp time if they work overtime?
Well, anything over, anything over eighty would be at time and a half, whether it was comp time or overtime, whichever.
I think you're asking, is it going to accrue as comp, we're gonna pay it?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm asking. Is it gonna, is it gonna go to comp?
It would either go to comp or overtime, depending on which, on what was, earlier y'all approved the, the overtime. So we have that, that in there now too. So it would be at whatever was approved by their supervisor of, of either overtime or comp time.
Do you know what section that is, Loretta, in the personnel policy?
Uh, this is the D, Department of Labor, two oh seven K.
But it's addressed in three point oh two.
This is straight out of the personnel file this morning. Three point oh two, section four, under exemptions. And you can have this.
All right, gentlemen, questions, comment about this exemption for law enforcement? And we then have a motion to, uh, adopt the order adopting the two oh seven K exemption for law enforcement.
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
Guys, thank y'all very much. Appreciate y'all's support and, and help, and I know that we had that well. Thank you.
Give those back to you. Well.
I'm gonna have to go.
Ma'am. All right.
Yes, yes, sir.
Takes us to number six. Discuss, consider, pension or county records management preservation budget funds for shredding services. Ms. Kate.
Um, the shredding truck came last week and we had some records that needed to be shredded. And you want to get in on this too? Okay.
I would like to in a minute too.
Okay. All right. Well, let's just go ahead. Christina had some records that needed to be shredded. I had records that were, needed to be shredded. Um, so we would like permission to pay for it out of the shredding service line item in the county records management budget, which is zero five nine five three one five seven two. I don't have an amount because they do it by weight and we haven't received a bill yet, but.
Will it be less than the four thousand that's in there?
Yes, it should be.
I don't know. Things are going up.
I know. The fuel to get here.
Hopefully it is.
I have a question about this because we never know when the shredding services are coming. I was just wondering if it would be cheaper to let the offices know when they're coming so we can all jump on and say, okay, this is what we got going on. Uh, instead of like, I know Tessa orders it, someone else orders it. If we could all do it at one time, would it be more feasible to the taxpayers?
Pound plus a trip or just by the thing?
Has them come on a regular basis. My office will call and find out when they're coming for adult probation and schedule.
We have them to you already.
Oh, you do? Y'all have them come monthly, don't you?
They come by monthly. What, if you need it, then they'll dump. Uh, if you don't, then you don't have to. But they don't charge us by the pound. They charge us, uh, it's like forty-five bucks for the poly cart full. So I don't know.
They shred on site?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can go out there and watch it shred all around your.
Is it the same service that you're getting that we're using over here at the courthouse?
Well, that's what I was just asking. Is it the same, there's, I saw a poly cart down there in the bottom of the annex. Um, is that the same one that y'all are using?
I believe so. No. We use whoever the adult probation uses.
Yeah, I think it's probably the same because I don't know of any other, but it's forty-five bucks a deal for us. But, and if you don't need it, they don't charge you.
Well, and they probably charge us by the pound because ours are already in boxes. We, we file by fiscal year, so that's probably.
I had it done at dispatch when we first took over because they had storage rooms full of stuff they didn't need anymore. They made us take it out of the boxes and dump it into the poly cart. So that they could lift it up. This is like a trash truck kind of deal.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
So you need to contact the probation department, see when they're coming by.
Okay.
Of course, they'll give you a poly cart.
Do they charge a trip charge?
That's what my question is.
I don't know. We only use them once a year, so we haven't got the bill yet.
I'm just trying to make.
Sheriff, he'll give you contact information. If they're charging a trip charge, yeah, it would save if they all did it one time.
It'd be better for the public.
If it's just by the weight, then it makes no difference.
Who?
Tracy, yeah, she's watching. Shredding services of Texas out of Abbling.
Okay.
Tracy's watching online.
Watching.
I'm just trying to make the best thing for the taxpayers. I mean, if we're gonna get a trip charge every time, it'd be.
You think it's what the fuel like it is, is there gonna be a trip charge?
Sure.
I think there's a fuel charge.
All right. Can we have a motion then to pay for the shredding service, uh, that Loretta has mentioned, those offices out of, uh, Records Management, which is zero five nine five three one five seven two, up to the amount that they're gonna charge us for?
Okay.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
No trip charge.
Okay, that's a good deal.
Yeah, thank you.
Hope they don't wake you up after our conversation and start doing trip charge.
They're probably watching.
All right. Item number seven, discuss, consider contract with Texas Rural Transit District, which is the guy, the overseer of umbrella for city and rural rides for emergency transportation services. Uh, I'm on the board, CAR, or actually CTRD, CTRTD, Central Texas Rural Transit District. And they say that they want to, uh, provide transportation services at no cost in event emergencies or crisis as determined Eastern County. I think what they're trying to do is get on that, uh, first net so that they will have better telephone service in case of emergency. And so part of that is offering this no-cost emergency transportation for the citizens. Uh, so it says, transport its constituents during the amendment, during the event of an emergency or crisis in the community. Examples are fire, flooding, electrical, natural disasters, imminent threat to life and property. And of course, we know, we know what to call buses are, different types of buses with passenger lifts and ramps and whatever. Um, I just think this is a good deal. It costs the county nothing. It costs the citizens nothing. And it will provide transportation to citizens that don't have any other way to get around, to get out in front of a emergency, get away from it. Uh, with that, I'll try to answer any questions anybody has. All right. Can we have motion then to enter into this contract with Central Texas Rural Transit District doing business at City and Rural Rides? And allow me to sign a sign?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. And I'm gonna go ahead and sign three of them. Kathy, if you'll keep one for a placeholder.
Okay.
And right, I'll give you one as well.
Thank you.
And then I'll send one off to CAR and get them to sign their part of it, and I'll get that back to you. All right. Okay, let's see. Item number eight, this is kind of unusual. Discuss, consider executing a release of easement for property at three oh seven East Lubbock Street, Norman, Texas, related to a parcel sold to the state of Texas. This concerns that parcel of land that was just adjoining our parcel of land that we owned down in Gorman that we sold to the state of Texas. And when they ran the title on that second one, they found that back in nineteen sixty-seven, the city of Gorman gave an easement to Eastern County for us to park vehicles on and do other things with. This is why that shop was sitting where it was probably. Now they're trying to get this sold, get it, get the title cleaned up and finalize all that deal. They need the county to, to sign a release of easement. And that way they can get that title transferred over to the state of Texas.
Judge Fields, I noticed that they have a styled Eastland County precinct number two.
Well, that's because.
The name's not multiple versions, I'm not sure. I'll find out what they're gonna do.
Are you running it to share it tonight?
Yeah, I was gonna walk you over.
You got it.
All right, I have number nine, discuss and take action on the formation of salary agreements. Committee? Is it though?
Uh, yes, sir. It's that time of year again. So basically, um, the law is still the same, it has not changed, that we can either have nine public members or six elected officials and three public members, so the court needs to decide how they wish to form those.
We've always used public members and drawing thumbs and having a jury. I'll have the motion continue to use none. Okay? I'll say. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Get my phone out, I'm seven more minutes. Just let it go.
Uh, oh, lost my agenda.
I'm in a hurry.
Yes.
Number ten.
Number ten.
County judge to draw the names of potential salary agreements committee members and alternates.
So the first nine will be, uh, the regular members.
Right.
And then the law, um, allows for you to draw alternates, so if you'll draw the rest as alternates, I would appreciate it.
All of the rest of them is alternate?
Yes, there's not that many.
Sometimes it takes a lot of them.
Yeah.
All right, so the first one I have up is Theodore L. Kerr in Cisco. Theodore L. Kerr. Ricky Lee Purvis in Eastland. Jonathan Nicholas Hubbard in Rising Star. Lancer Shane Morrow in Eastland. Courtney Nicole Seaton in Gorman. Jordan R. Perry in Gorman. John Glenn Kidd of Eastland. Is that number seven?
Yes, sir.
Elmer W. Franks in Ranger. Valerie DeLuca in Eastland. And that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
These will be alternates.
Okay, now these come up for the alternates. So alternate number one, Heather Christine Henson, Eastland. Pepper Hayes Barrett of Ranger. Jennifer Ella Bonilla of Eastland. Alternate number three.
That's it?
All right, that's it.
So what I'll do is notify the, these people, and then, um, I'll let you know when the committee's formed.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. I can go slow. Okay. All right, I have number eleven, discuss, consider remaining ARCA funds and discuss expenditures. Commissioner.
Sure, we were, y'all were talking about, there was a great opportunity to upgrade, we thought the same thing, too, so we were talking about remaining money, money upgrading some equipment. Unique opportunity, just like it is to spend a million dollars on a computer program, just to upgrade forty-year-old equipment at the same time.
Well, give me a plan.
The plan is that that's what we decide on, most of the ideal. We, you know, not knowing how much was left, and I still, I know you got three hundred and five for Westbound, he told me three hundred and fifty. He's tall.
I went back and looked at the October twenty-fifth minutes.
It's three hundred and five?
Unless I transpose, yes.
Okay, because I sent him that first red sheet, and he almost had a co-ordinary.
Well, none of us could remember.
I know, that's what I told him, I said, no, we couldn't, like, because it said fifty thousand, and he, he was like, oh, my goodness, I've got all this engineering stuff done.
And his application is in, but last I heard from Jill, he had not submitted quotes or any of plans or anything.
But that's what, I mean.
Well, and before we, we're gonna have to go through the application process for us as well, so we did kind of have an idea of what you're thinking about.
For, for me, at precinct four, uh, I wanna upgrade the pickup that I'm driving, uh, something a little bit better than you brought it down in, and upgrade these brush cutters. That's, you know, looking at precinct. I mean, I can't sure.
No matter what we can do there, it kind of depends on what we've got left, whether or not we have to pay everything we're already encumbered.
Part of it shows, looks like maybe an eighteen, is that what we're gonna have left?
Next county, if all eight fire departments come in and want what they want.
Well, and that's the reason why we wanted to talk better, or I wanna talk about, not to get an idea of what we have available to look at, because the same thing that's happening with everything else that's happening with equipment, where the brush cutters were a hundred and forty thousand dollars a few years ago, they're a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You know, it, 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 it's, the same thing's happening with equipment, uh, that's happening everywhere, the cost is going up.
Keep in mind, we gotta spend it by the twenty-five.
We have to commit it by the end of twenty-four, spend it by twenty twenty-six, I think.
So if we've got a supply chain issue and we order, I knew whatever, it had, we.
We have time.
We're encumbering, we're gonna encumber the amount for that piece of equipment we went and ordered. So that wouldn't have to go into the timeline of that being spent by?
It still would have to be spent by.
Okay.
But as long as it's committed by the end of twenty twenty-four, we're okay.
See, that gives us the opportunity to go out and buy board stuff and try to come up with an idea of what's available too. Through replies, you know, if we start early, we have a lot more time.
Right, right, and prices may come down.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the second payment, ARCA two or the second tran, I mean, we've, we've thought of a lot of different things, so. You went on, on website last week and looked at some of that.
Yes, um, I went on the U.S. Treasury website and certified that all our information was still correct. That's the only thing they needed at that time, I checked it again, I checked it Friday, and it still was not asking for anything else, so hopefully our money just shows up pretty soon.
And like I say, thi- this is preliminary on getting the money and all that, it just gives us the opportunity, if we kind of have an idea of what we're talking about, we can go out and try to find.
Well, and we use this to pay off any debt that we already have.
Cannot use it for that.
We've got like four main painters on the, on the deck right now, okay.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think.
I'll try to go backward, you pick that up, you're done with the debt.
Yeah, they said that big.
Yeah. But that's, that's the reason why I put it on there, so it kind of gives us an idea of if that's what everybody wants to think about, gives us an opportunity to go out and look, and price check, and call around, kind of like we've done when we bought precinct two truck, I called everybody that sold trucks to the Bible, just give me your best price on this. You know, and that's what we did, I got crate liner, Mac, Peterbilt, everybody sent me a process on, or a bid on a truck, and then we could invest in the bunch, often, because Bible was just like anything else. You can, you can call around, there's more than one vendor on Bible with pasta, you can get better deals all around. That's, that's my mindset, you guys are all in your vision.
I've heard that, it is, but the other, I was wanting another blade, or precinct three, like, to purchase another blade, it would really help us out a lot, since we've got them two new blades that's fed up, getting those faded, because you only gotta, seems like we don't get much moisture anymore, and you need to get it done fast, and they, I don't know, they're a lot faster than those. And, uh, I did get a bit, uh, quote on the new one, like we have, what, what is it? It is a, it's called a one forty now, so a twelve M. It's, that's where that, it's through Source.
Source well?
Yes, and, uh, it did that, and, uh, grab it, this right now, it was two seventy-nine, six seventy-eight. Yes, ma'am.
Is that what the mother bought?
Yes, sir, I think when James has bought the last one, and it, was it some forty?
Two, two thirty-nine.
Two thirty-nine.
It's gone up about ten percent now.
And I really thought it was about an iron neck, I was really shocked it wasn't. I thought, boy, ain't luck down here. That's just a, is that a twelve M? Yeah, it's more or less a twelve M, but now they went to, uh, one forty, yes, sir.
Just plain one forty, or does it have a letter?
It don't. They took the M off. They used to, like you're saying, says, uh, new Caterpillar model one forty J, well, J Y, but it ain't on the side of the machine, odor graders, with a standard equipment. Uh, specs or whatever. But the, the deal is on getting them quotes, so they're, they're not good for thirty days on that screen.
That's right.
But I was wanting to have something go by, because I heard three or four different numbers, I heard, first, you get one for two forty, and I heard they jumped to three fifty, and then when they jumped to three fifty, I was scared, and I said, give me a quote, but like you say, James, it's only last thirty days.
Some quotes I've got, they're, they're good for thirty days, and then you gotta redo it, I mean, they either gonna go down or they're gonna go up.
They're probably gonna go up, and he said they're probably most likely gonna go up.
Yeah, well, as far as Caterpillar, yeah, he, he said that come August, they've got another ten percent increase or something. Now, I don't know about trucks and stuff like that.
By August, we should have that second payment, which is the final payment, we'll know then how much.
Well, yeah, like I say, it gives us opportunity to work for the next few months on prices and just see more.
I think what we need to do is either each one of y'all need to contact Jill Fenny and work out some kind of a plan for what you want from your precinct, or she, or we just have one big work session, she comes in, y'all work out a plan of what you want. We've gotta have that patient process, of course, y'all, before y'all can't get together without a commission court meeting, so either you gotta do it individually, or we've gotta have a meeting to talk about what it's gonna actually cost, and when the money's gonna get here, how much money we're gonna wind up with.
Well, and that's, that's the reason why I kind of, general why I put on the agenda is, if that, if that is a option that we wanna talk about, it gives us the, the ability to go out and do this, like Ronnie did.
Judge, what's working best is if the court decides what they're going to approve, and gives you permission to sign the application and move forward, um, as far as the contract and everything, if we have all that in front of us, because that's what I'm gonna send to Jill, is what court is approved.
Well, so, so do we wanna just, what money's left? Go as far as it'll go, I'm in favor of upgrading equipment if we can, Robert.
As far as that, I mean, just split it equal between the four precincts, or?
That's the most fair way.
Yeah. Well, I'll be honest, you know, you sit there and you look at what we've got, for me personally over there, and just, I've got Billy, or Bob Delisister, I mean, it's not gonna be, but I look at it like this, and it's, I can borrow yours, I can borrow, I borrowed Ronnie's last one, I can borrow a Bible, and borrow a brush.
Yeah.
And, and that, that's, you, you've gotta weigh your options on, on. We have limited resources, what's gonna be best spent on those resources? That, that's what, that's the reason why I thought, nah, I ain't worried about Bible, I know where Ronnie's keys are. I mean, if I need it, I'll go get it.
So, did, have you priced the brush cutter? Did you?
No, no.
I, I've priced it, and it's about, it depends on what kind you want, but, kind beer, I've got a Kubota. But it's, the Kubota's probably the cheapest, it's gonna be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with armor on. A hundred and thirty something thousand, he, he didn't give me the quote on that, but on the, uh.
Well, and, I mean, for me over there, James, I'm looking at maybe even just a tractor with a loader on the front and shredder. It necessarily has to be a brush cutter, for me, if I'm, if I have the ability to load brush and cut brush at the same time with gear. If I'm, if I have the ability to load brush and cut brush at the same time with gear, I can make a lot of headway.
With a shifter?
Yeah. I can cut it off at the ground and load it with something else. Now, if we do that, we gotta cut a little bit, stop, change attachments, haul for a little bit. If I had the ability to load at the same time I was cutting, you're speeding the process. Yeah, with a grapple. I mean. But there again, until we decided, I don't wanna call around and start getting sales and hopes up, cause then they cry when you call back saying, never mind.
Yeah.
You're not giving a crap.
That is true, that is absolutely true, Judge.
The deal, you go out for bids and then them people just keep, every week they keep calling back. You're gonna do something, you're gonna do something, and it gets the tractor in a hurry. And I said, I ain't doing nothing yet. All, all I'm gonna try to find some prices.
And that, that's, that's what I'm saying. We have an idea of kind of where, a, a direction we wanna go. It gives us the opportunity to go in that direction.
Well, the budget hearings in like two weeks, we may know something about offer two in two weeks.
Yeah. But that also gives us, or two weeks of calling around and getting some ideas too. To have, if we have that money, Bud, we'll talk about it when we're all sitting around this table talking about.
I'm in favor of it. We need to get a plan for each precinct. We don't know what Andy might want for his precinct.
I even talked to Andy, he called me last week, cause I called him to see what, he told me he was sick.
When do you think the fire departments will come in and get their money?
I don't know, and y'all may wanna set a deadline on that. Jill has already reached out again, asking them to send in their application. Holden.
Holden. Oh, yeah, I know Cisco. And what about Eastland County Waters? Cause they, you know, didn't, wouldn't it talk about that they were getting a grant or something and they might not need that money?
They wanted five hundred thousand, and then they got a grant that recovered two hundred thousand. So they still need three hundred from us. That's, that's my, my recollection of the numbers. If that's wrong, tell me.
That is correct.
So we're gonna get.
So we changed it to three hundred? Yeah, it was five hundred when I, I was reading.
And all that was said is they possibly could get other grants, but they weren't sure. So they wanted us to leave the three hundred thousand. So they oughta know pretty soon.
Well, and Westman.
You've got some more time on this, even after a few months go by, because we don't have to spend the money. We have to update the money by twenty-four.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is it's not jumping in and saying, yeah, let's go buy. It gives us opportunity, if that's an idea we want to discuss, to go out and share. Because you may call and, and they're not able to play today. Or them say it's gonna be, you're looking eighteen months down the road, I feel.
I think y'all need each one to decide what you wanna, what you wanna do as far as equipment upgrade or whatever. Pickup and equipment upgrade for Robert, whatever y'all wanna decide. And then bring it back to court, we'll see if Jill can be here, uh, and work up the application. We need application for each individual precinct?
No.
Road and bridge.
Yes, and, and it really is working better. If I can get the information, I'm filling out the applications and just sending them to Jill.
Okay.
At time wise, it's just very nice. That way we're not waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. It's all moving very nicely.
So, and Andy needs to be told this, if y'all wanna do something, let's put each individual precinct, put some kind of package together.
Next two, week after, week after next one we do budget stuff. In the past Thursday mornings, we've sat down and talked about it.
We've also got, uh, a meeting on the sixth. So we gotta pay the bills on the sixth of next month, which is next week. So on June the sixth, we've got a special commission court meeting to pay the bills. We've got all of our budget hearings Monday through Thursday. About, as I said, Thursday's usually a, they wrap up everything.
Yeah.
Have a last regular scheduled meeting on the sixth.
Mr. Ray, which, would you rather us do on the sixth or the?
Well, and that way it's an agenda item.
That's right.
Because I, I'm also putting agendas where stuff is approved. Um, so that way it's an agenda item, it's approved, and it's done. We won't have a, a specific agenda item for that.
And we may not need hard numbers, but we need some kind of an idea of what you want, and then kind of put a hard number to it at some point.
Go that direction.
If you get a hard number of what you want, that's fine, but.
So wouldn't it be better if I brought something to you like this?
Oh, that's, that's perfect.
Yeah, that's perfect.
You want me to go ahead and use, I know this is what we want.
I'll take it. That way you don't have to worry about getting it back.
Hey, so do, do you want to put down the agenda for the sixth to have a discussion about the years of offer funds or buying machinery and equipment?
Right, I won't be here on the sixth. I can do mine later.
Okay.
Well, the thirteenth, or what it, the thirteenth will actually be a regular commissioners court meeting that morning. You gonna put it on that day?
Yeah, we can put it on that.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have the agenda set up, and then we'll go on budget workshop, brush days, budget workshop.
Yeah.
Then just do it on the thirteenth?
No, I, with that or the thirteenth, I don't.
Let's just do it all on the thirteenth. Everybody give him more time, it gives Andy more time. He's probably feeling pretty rotten right now.
That works though, man.
Okay. We'll just have it on the, if you make a note, we'll have a lot of regular agenda on the thirteenth.
Okay.
However you want to style it, discuss, consider, managers.
We got, I think I've got.
Equipment, vehicles, machinery. And we'll leave it open so we can talk about a whole round of Robin of things.
Yeah, but it'll be road and bridge.
Yeah, road and bridge, yeah.
I'll put equipment and vehicles.
Okay. And you'll send that agenda item over to.
I'm already sending her items for the thirteenth, so.
Thank you for doing it, Mr. Ray.
Yes, sir.
That kind of supports the process. Okay, anything else on item eleven about the remaining offer fund? And we may even know more about it by the time budget workshop, we may have offer two here, but. Give us some numbers for it. Okay, anything else on the offer funds? All right, hearing nothing, then we'll go on item number twelve, nine one one update, copper dispatch update. Sheriff, anything dispatch?
Uh, not much, we're still one short out there. And we're going through, uh, PCIC DPS audit right now, so let's see if there's any pretty swap. Uh, it takes about a month to get through it. Um, but other than that, we'll be here Thursday physically. They've been doing everything, um, virtually and all that stuff. Other than that, everything's going good.
Great, a lot of good deals. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any discussions for dispatch or nine one one? All right. With that, then we'll go to item number thirteen, which is up there on County Burn Ban. Of course, the burn ban's in effect, and it's a relatively new burn ban, so it's in operation for quite a while.
If you put it on again, you might get it up, right?
Have a double burn ban.
Double.
We've never done that. I might've done one by mistake like that once almost, but.
Should, should we add something to that burn ban on these welders? We, we get, we had a fire out here, uh, south of town. Last week, started by welder. Did, did they need a spotter?
They certainly need a spotter.
Should we make that official that if they need a spotter?
We've talked about this before, Brad came in and talked to us about what is, what we can and can't do. Um, there's a, there's what they call an emergency burn ban where there's no welding, no outdoor. That can put shredding and.
Yeah, it puts all kinds of stuff.
That's. About all we can do is tell them they've got to have a spotter, and I don't know how to actually enforce that here, so. They need a spotter, they need a spotter with water supply handy.
Again, we've got orders to go to behind.
Yeah.
I'm saying, you know, if they brought up, you can do a reckless deal on, but probably can't be doing.
Yeah.
They had one, they're sharing trouble.
Oh, man, yeah. About one hundred, twenty years.
Oh, really?
My, my phone, my wife stepped that, I can have a ranch out there, one hundred, twenty years, that's way now.
It's only twenty-five percent and it's, you know.
Yeah, it's still, still ruined. Okay, so any, anything else on burn ban? I know we need to get, Julie, if you'd put it out there that anybody that consternates welding needs to have a spotter with a water supply handy. Thank you. Okay, item fourteen, personnel matters.
Yes, we each have a report. The time period of the report is April twenty-seventh through May tenth. During that time period, there were four new hires, one full-time jail guard, one full-time road hand for precinct two, one part-time deputy tax assessor collector, one part-time road hand precinct four, and there was one employment termination, which was a full-time road hand in precinct two.
Okay. Anyone else have any items to add to personnel report? A big sigh. Need some air?
No.
All right, can we have a motion to accept personnel report as presented? Make, made, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye as well.
Number fifteen is budgeting appropriate matters, fifteen A is certification additional revenue. We've got a little here.
We have over twenty. And what I would like to do is go through the grant, which is the first, um, over six pages. Just read those like I normally do, and then the other ones, if I could just read off the amount, and if y'all have questions, I'll answer them. And Kathy has copies, so she can record where it came from, like she does in the minutes. If that's all right? Okay, because otherwise we're gonna be here a while. Okay, the first one is two hundred twenty thousand, one hundred nine dollars, eighty-four cents. It was received from the state comptroller for the Texas General Land Office, deposited into grants fund credited to the TXGLO MIT grant revenue line. I'm asking, oh, this is the Lake Leon dam improvements. I'm asking the court to increase the TXGLO MIT grant expenditure line by the same amount. Next is three hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars also received from the state comptroller for the Texas General Land Office. It was also deposited into the grants checking account and credited to the TXGLO MIT grant revenue line. And on this one, I'm also asking the court to increase the TXGLO MIT grant expenditure line by the same amount. And this was also for the dam repairs, um, Lake Leon dam repairs.
Yeah, I have a bunch of them, James.
I do too.
Um.
No, we all had that many dams.
There's a bunch of them.
Just a reminder, y'all, you've seen the expenditures for these already come through, because we have three days to pay these. But since we're catching up on our, our October number, December, I'm just getting to the certification. Uh, next one is twenty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars received from the state comptroller for the Texas office of the governor and deposited with Eastland County treasurer. It was deposited in the grants fund checking credited to the TXOOG four three zero two six zero one grant revenue line. This is the computer equipment for the sheriff's office. And I'm asking the court to increase the grants fund transfer to general fund expenditure line by the same amount. And there's a second one that goes with it, which I think was actually your first page. This is the transfer from grants fund to general fund. And it's the same twenty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars. Um, it's credited to the general fund transfer from grants fund revenue line. And I'm asking the court to increase the sheriff electronic equipment expenditure line by the same amount. The next one is sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, seventy-three cents. It was received from the state comptroller. It was deposited into the grants FEMA grant DR four five eight six revenue line. It was for the winter storm twenty twenty-one expenditures. I'm asking the court to increase the grants FEMA DR four five eight six expenditure line by the same amount. And this, this also has already been paid out. It went to Myrtle Wilks.
For the extra setting up the shelter over there, electric, electricity building.
The next one is one hundred nine thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars, eighty-one cents received from the state comptroller. It was deposited in grants fund credited to FEMA grant HMA TX four two two three revenue line. This was also for the Lake Leon dam repair RFR twenty-one. I'm asking the court to increase the grant FEMA HMA four two two three expenditure line by the same one hundred nine thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars, eighty-one cents. And this one has also been paid out. We have five days on those. And then I will start going through these individually, and if you have a question, stop me. And four hundred fifty-eight dollars, three cents. Three hundred forty-four dollars, ninety-five cents. Nine dollars, sixty-three cents. Six dollars, eighty-eight cents. Seventeen dollars, ninety-seven cents. One hundred forty-seven dollars, eighty-one cents. One hundred eighty dollars. Two hundred dollars. Two hundred seventy-five dollars. One hundred eighty dollars. Six hundred three dollars, fifty cents. One thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, sixty-five cents. One thousand six hundred eighty dollars. Six thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars, forty-eight cents. And I do wanna talk about this one. Um, I don't know if the court is aware that, um, the housing authority from the city of Gorman has the option to do, because they're not at taxing, they're not taxable, so, and I don't know that it's an option. Um, but I think this is based off their revenue, so they paid in lieu of taxes. Next is one thousand nine hundred eleven dollars. And thirty-four dollars, six cents.
Okay, gentlemen, accept some of the comments? Can we hear a motion in to certify additional revenue and allow the expenditures al- already approved? Second, motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well. A whole bunch of them to sign here. Let's sign those after noon.
Okay.
Fifteen A, fifteen B, emergency amendments?
No emergency amendments.
Fifteen C, amendment changes by fund?
Yes, um, there are two pages. And you'll notice over in the right-hand column, there are either adjustments within budgets or adjustments for overages. Um, I don't think I moved anything from a contingency, so it's just regular adjustments. And I did clean up the HSA contribution lines in budgets where I took the money out of the brush cutter line and put it into the HSA contribution. So I think all of those are cleaned up.
Do you have a motion for first, any questions about that? Do you have a motion to make amendment changes by fund? Do you have a motion to make amendment changes by fund? Make it made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well. Want to get caught up?
Okay.
All right. Fifteen C is amendment changes by fund. We've done that, sorry. Fifteen D is report of financial condition. Like we have multiple reports?
Yes, we have several reports. Um, the first, and I'm not going to go over the November and December monthly too much. We discussed them before. Um, what I would like to do is just go ahead and go to the May and reconcile report. Oh, yes, you do, right.
Can we go back to November? Okay, there should be a spreadsheet in your packet that shows the month-ending bank account totals. As of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, the amount of cash and other assets in the custody of my office was ten million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and eight cents.
I'll just put the issues down. You have a motion to approve that and to sign the affidavit? Made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well.
And while you're doing that, I will point out on the second page of the combined statement of cash position, operations clearing, those show a negative general ledger balance. That is a general ledger balance. It is not a bank balance.
Bank balances on the spreadsheet that I gave you. Move to December. There would be a spreadsheet in there also of the month-ending bank account totals. As of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, the amount of cash and other assets in the custody of my office was eleven million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Do we have any questions or comments? We have a motion to accept that report and to sign the affidavit.
Okay.
It's made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well.
And also on the second page of the combined statement of cash position, um, operations clearing at the bottom of the page is showing a negative general ledger balance. But again, there was money in the bank. Probably a transfer that wasn't
Yes.
recorded until later, the way we had to put everything back in.
Yes.
Thank y'all very much for getting us to this point.
I am almost done with January.
I'm not.
I'm almost done.
Now we have unlooking style balances as of May twentieth.
Yes. And the first report is the combined statement of cash position, and these are general ledger balances as of May twentieth. At that time, general fund checking four million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars, sixty-two cents. Texpool, three hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars, fifty-three cents. First Financial Bank CDs, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred ten dollars. Texas Bank, one CD, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Church's Bank, one CD, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Prosperity Bank, one CD, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Texpool Prime, five hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars, twenty-seven cents. Texas Class, five hundred ten thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty cents. Total general ledger balance for general fund, seven million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, ninety-three dollars, seventy-two cents. Roden Bridge Checking, nine hundred ten thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars, fourteen cents. If you will go down to Fund Twenty-Six, which says grant U.S. Treasury Coronavirus, uh, checking, two hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred nine dollars, thirteen cents. Three CDs, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Texas Class, five hundred thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars, ninety-three cents. Total general ledger balance for the ARPA funds, one million, five hundred fifteen thousand, thirty-one dollars, six cents. The other funds are listed, and then on page four, there is a total, and the total general ledger balance for funds on deposit, thirteen million, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars, seventy-nine cents. There are two total pages, and it's the combined statement of revenue and expense. This is also, as of May twentieth, you'll see the month-to-date revenue and expense by fund. And then the year-to-date, as of May twentieth, general fund revenues, eight million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars, sixteen cents. Expense, five million, five hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars, thirty-five cents. Roden Bridge Revenue, one million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars, ninety-four cents. Expense, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars, two cents. The remainder of the funds are listed, and there are three pages of that. The next report is the combined statement of cash receipts and dispersments showing May beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash dispersments, and May ending cash balance as of May twentieth. It's by fund and account type. There are six pages of that, and as of May twentieth, the county had an adequate cash position and revenue and expense position. The last report is the lease payment schedule showing the four lease purchase agreements for Roden Bridge.
Hey, gentlemen, questions or comments on this report ending on May twentieth?
I think they're all made this year.
With that, then, do we have a motion to accept the report as presented? Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well. Okay, that takes us to fifteen E, investment report.
Um, investment, this is the April investment report. You'll see in the first section, it's general fund. Uh, there are four First Financial Bank CDs listed. The, um, OPEB CD, Indian five-four-one-seven, uh, was withdrawn, and Christina purchased the new CD at the amount off the actuarial report. Uh, you'll see the Church's Bank CD, the Texas Bank CD, the Prosperity Bank CD, Texas Class, and the two Texpool accounts listed. Then in the American Recovery Plan Act, the second section, the three CDs. Uh, the collateral on the cash balances and bank certificates of deposit was adequate for this period, and this report is made in accordance with the provisions of Government Code two-two-five-six, the Public Funds Investment Act. The investments held in the Eastland County portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and with the county's investment policies and strategies. And what you'll see next, are you gonna talk about it?
While we're on the ARPA funds, we have two hundred twenty-four thousand, let up the checking account. We're paying two hundred thirty-four thousand a day to be forced. Ruta has figured out payroll, need extra payroll for the employees. Get up to that next week, but I'm gonna need money in checking account. So there is a CD. We're gonna be the three CDs, First Financial Bank, six plus. If Steve will let me redeem CD without a penalty, I'll say I'm not redeeming CD five-four-three-zero. And if he, if we're gonna charge a penalty, I can move two hundred fifty thousand around six plus.
If we redeem it from five-four-three-zero, that is, that's already been designated. That's where it came from, ARPA.
Yes, those are all ARPA.
Just totally, it's just being in the CD account being held.
Yes.
Maybe I'll let you do a redemption on that without paying.
The CD usually like, that's a redeeming without a penalty. I'm not sure of the cities last year.
Been less than a month.
He needs one to be a teacher in high school.
Dave Simba's gonna be a teacher in high school. Really?
On apples, they need that.
Well.
Wow.
He's been with the bank a long time. Well. Okay.
That's my plan to get off.
And the rate is so low, if we took it out of Texas class, I think we'd actually end up, even if we paid a penalty, it's like a six-month penalty, right?
I don't know, he's never charged.
So even at six-month penalty, it would be less than taking it out of Texas class at the current rate. And Texas class last week is, was at point eight-nine percent, so I think we'd better off.
I think we need to redeem it out of the place that's been categorized for ARPA funds. That's where it came in, that's where it went.
Oh, well, it's all ARPA funds.
I know, I know, this is.
So Miss, you already said you're gonna pay all of the boys and women soon.
Um, it will be June third.
June third, you'll look at it. Thank you very much.
Well, do we need to give you the authority to redeem, uh, maybe four, five-three, five-four-three-zero and part of five-four-three-one and put the rest of it back into a CD?
How much is it gonna cost? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's just, it's over, it was on that ARPA, two hundred twenty-five thousand. Just over two hundred twenty-five thousand.
So you should have leftovers.
On that, yes.
What would you do with that? You just redeem what you needed.
Yes, if I just need a terrific dollar.
And so you, do you want that in the form of a motion to allow you to redeem that and to pay the and to pay the, uh, put it in payroll line item? Ruta?
Yes, that one CD.
Okay, can we have a motion then to redeem, uh, the CD that we have at First Financial Bank ending with five-four-three-zero and allow that money or part of that money to be used to pay for the payroll?
Premium pay.
Premium pay, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Probably her.
Who seconded it?
Thanks. I voted.
Yes.
All right.
Do you actually want permission to actually redeem two CDs? Because if the fire department's all sorry.
And we're gonna have a meeting next Monday, just if we need to take some other kind of action, because we're gonna pay the bills next Monday.
Let's put it on there for next Monday.
If y'all want it on there, go ahead and let Betsy know.
It's two weeks.
It is two weeks, you're right, it's two weeks. Give you enough time, Christina?
I don't know when that's gonna come.
Well, we can hold them days.
Okay. Okay, we're not making payroll on that, so there's not a timeline on it.
Okay, you wanna go to the next page?
Yep.
Um.
So after, after the investment report, I just put together the spreadsheet through.
Thank you.
The next report is the management report from First Financial Bank, and on page two of that report, uh, it has the pledged market value of all securities for our funds on deposit, which is twelve million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars, eighty-one cents. Then Prosperity also pledges, and it's the market value, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars, twenty-eight cents.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments about the investment report? We have a motion to accept the investment report as presented.
Okay.
Make it made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well, make some amendments. That takes us to fifteen F, financial reports. Kathy, I've got a report here from the appraisal district. And that may be the only one I've got. I think it is. You have another one?
I have the district clerk report and the DMV.
Okay.
And could I go to page, the second from last page, I think, in the appraisal district report?
Next to the last thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you'll look at the twenty-twenty-one tax year, as of the end of April, ninety-five point six-one percent of property tax was collected, Eastland County.
Can we have a motion to accept these reports in through the minutes?
I'll make it.
Make it made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye? I think it was emails. I didn't hear Ronnie saying it. Okay. Good. All right. Let's go on then to item number 16, bills, claims of the counts.
What I just gave you is the last set I will go over.
Did I kick you off?
Yeah. I don't think so.
What date is it?
It's dated on the front. It says 5/21/AR.
What you have on these is the 5/24/AR.
That is Kathy's set right there. Thank you. There you go. So there are seven sets total. The first one is May 13th payroll, all payables other than workers comp and unemployment. The next set is May 13th payroll gross wages. And May 10th through 19th, health reimbursement account. That is employee medical reimbursement. May 10th, grant spend. That is that $109,157.81 to the Eastland County Water Supply District. The next one is May 18th, comdata vouchers payable. That one will be paid today. Then May 23rd payables. Are there two comdat or just one? Okay. Payables for today on page four. Net data is charged to acute computer equipment. The actual line, those two lines are charged, or those two payments are charged to should be 010459457, not 010409356. And then the last one is the ARPA funds, to Eforce for Sheraton Jail software. And this is also, that will connect all the entities.
All right. Gentlemen, questions, comments? Do we have a motion to pay the bills, claims of the counts, and to make the change on the one scheduled payments from 5/23? Two changes in there, line up. Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well. And that, yeah, I'm out of the way. I hadn't got, okay. Too much paperwork on there.
Okay. So if I just call them out and not knowing when the other offices are asking, okay, they'll tell you. So there is a trip charge if they're specifically coming out for you?
Yes.
Call her, ma? Should I come once a month?
Yeah, another, they just pop in there to, maybe you need us to tread or not. I mean, who do I call?
Or you send me a phone call.
Why not? You done a trip.
Well, you called. Thank you, Christina.
I'll get something back from the title company or city of Gorman. I'll give it to you about that easement. Although they should file something. They should file the fully executed easement release back to you, I would think.
They will, you reported.
They'll have, you'll have it at some point.
Okay.
All right. With that, we've covered all the items on the agenda. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well, and we are adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Okay. I'm going to go make a copy real quick.
I'll just take it. I'm just, I'll see the mail and I'll tell you. I got to you, boy. I don't like.